We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone to our November 8th, 2018 City of Palaka Commission Meeting. As we call this meeting to order, Reverend Chumney of Victory Christian Fellowship had an emergency. He couldn't be with us. I'm gonna ask Ms. Elekka Kitchens if she would lead us in the invocation today and also the pledge. This is the past City Commissioner who's always here with us, and so Ms. Kitchens would mind leading us today.
Please join me in prayer. Father, we ask for your blessing upon this meeting and guide our city officials and keep all of our citizens safe, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Terrell L. Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Bora.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for, and you have a forum.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the October 11th minutes?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second, if any further discussion. Questions called, all in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. First up is a proclamation for National Hospice and Palliative Care Awareness Month. Crystal Burke from Haven Hospice, are you here? This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas 2018 marks the 51st anniversary of St. John's, of St. Christopher's Hospice in London, widely recognized as the first modern-day hospice organization and 36th anniversary of the Medicare hospice benefit in the United States. And whereas hospice and palliative care philosophy places the needs of individuals at the center of care, allowing patients and family caregivers to focus on quality of life, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness. And whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about health care they will want to receive should they have a serious or life-limiting illness, or if they were unable to speak for themselves. Whereas Haven believes that everyone deserves comfort, care, and compassion. And whereas in 2017, Haven had the honor and privilege to serve 16,008 individuals and families throughout North Florida. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim November 2018 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Awareness Month in the City of Palaka and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, to observe this month with the appropriate activities and programs and witness whereof appeared to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2018. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Bora, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
This is motion on the floor in a second, but Vice Mayor Brown's, motions by Commissioner Bora. Is there anyone ready that's, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Let's give it up for Hospice and National Hospice. The short one.
The short one, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor Brown, who is actually on our community advisory board, so thank you for that. I just wanna take a second to thank the city for allowing us the opportunity to come out and receive this proclamation. But Haven has been in this community for 39 years, and we have had the privilege to serve lots of individuals and continue and will continue to do so. So without the support of the city and individuals and families, we wouldn't be able to do that. So thank you.
Next up, Leah Ramsey, CDS Family and Behavior Health Services. National Runaway Prevention Month. Whereas National Runaway Prevention Month began in 2002 and is spearheaded each year by National Runaway Safe Line, NRS, the federally designated national communications center for runaways and homeless youth. And whereas the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, with studies suggesting that every year between 1.6 and 2.8 youth live on the streets of the United States. Runaway youth are often expelled from their home, have experienced abuse and trauma, are involved in foster care systems, are too poor to secure their own basic needs, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health services. And whereas children and youth who run away are at an increased danger for falling into high-risk situations, including risk of human trafficking. Effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because of partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human services agencies, law enforcement, schools, family faith-based organizations, and businesses. Whereas the National Runaway Safe Line is sponsored by National Runaway Prevention Month in November to raise awareness of issues facing runaways and homeless youth and educate the public about solutions and the roles they play in ending youth homelessness. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby recognize and endorse November 2018 as National Runaway Prevention Month in the City of Palaka. And we urge all citizens to support the effort to increase public awareness about, public awareness about, educate on behalf of, and provide positive and safe alternatives to runaways and homeless youth and their families and witness whereof appeared to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2018. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Bora, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
This is motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and City Commissioners for recognizing the importance of this issue to our community and taking the time to proclaim this month as National Runaway Prevention Month in Palaka. At CDS, Family and Behavioral Health Services, it's our mission to strengthen communities by building strong families. We hope that providing resources and education to our county's youth, their families, and the community, we will see a change in the number of youth running away each year. We realize that not only does running away cause concern for these family and friends, our law enforcement, and other service providers, but it also puts youth at a higher risk for many forms of victimization and involvement in crime. Our goal in recognizing National Runaway Prevention Month here is to ensure that youth are aware of those risks before they run away, and they know the resources available to them if they're considering running away, or they feel like that is their only option. Here in our community, we have safe place signs. You can find them by a yellow diamond-shaped sign that says "safe place." Our libraries, all of the city buses, all of the high schools, Home Depot, there are quite a few throughout the county, and the signs are pretty noticeable. So that is a place where youth can always go and ask for assistance if they feel that they have nowhere else to go. As he mentioned in the proclamation, there's also the National Runaway Safe Line, which is 1-800-RUNAWAY. That is a number that parents and youth can call for information or for assistance if they're dealing with those situations. We appreciate the opportunity to accept this proclamation, and we welcome your support and appreciate it.
Next up, Mike Burkhart, ordering sewer distribution specialist, 17 years of service. We gotta call up, call his folks in, the public works, come up with Mike. So Mike is that one person, for many years, if you saw him at work, you either loved him or you hated him. Fifty percent loved him, fifty percent hated him, and Mike was the guy who cut war off. And so, huh?
At one time.
At one time, he was. And so, he then was met with smiles or frowns. And so, but he's always been the guy who has been dedicated to his job, dedicated to the city, and we're just gonna take this opportunity to say thank you for all the work that you've done in this community, and you know, you get a chance to enjoy your retirement, but we're gonna miss you. And so, I'm gonna turn it over, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Griffin or Mr. Lab.
I think Sean had something I wanted to say right there, too.
Right, you're on, Burke.
I'd just like to say, we appreciate all your years of service. When you first started, you were working on a service truck with me. You've come a long way in a lot of years, and made a lot of repairs.
Yeah.
A lot of inclement weather, 105-degree weather, and freezing weather at night with ice and snow hanging off the boom. You have stayed on your service.
My pleasure. Thanks, Mr. Burke.
My pleasure.
Can we get the family to come up as well?
For the past 17 years, I worked with Mike very closely. He's not only the excellent go-worker, he's also a genuine real close friend of mine. I thank you for your service, I thank you for your friendship, and I congratulate you on your retirement.
Okay. Get a picture, then? Anything for the commission?
Just wanna thank you for your service. I had the opportunity to meet, I met you, but I had the opportunity to meet her, and I'll never forget you. Thank you for sharing your husband with us.
You're very welcome.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Travel, that's all I have to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to say, I guess I've been here longer than everybody, and he always met me with a smile.
Yeah, you met my mom at San Antonio Seaford.
That's right, I sure did.
Yeah, she was.
And I'd like to thank your wife, too, 'cause there are hours you all put in that they have, that you all been away from your wives and family, and we thank you for letting, let him do that and take care of us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pastor.
Certainly, I'd like to thank Mr. Burkhardt for the number of years of service he's provided the city and the various capacities, and for you loaning him to us so that he can provide us.
He can hear better.
I'll also.
And I did get a chance to meet Mr. Burkhardt down at the lot down there, and we were about to get ready to make some changes or whatever, so he's certainly a person who voices his opinion, and we certainly respect that. So thank you for, again, for all your service, and we wish you well.
I would also like to say thank you as well for 17 years of dedicated service. Your services has helped make Palaka a lot better, so again, thank you on behalf, not of this commission, but the citizens of this great city.
And I'd like to say that I remember when Mike first got here, the beard was much shorter. And the hair was a lot blonder. And Mike, he was a fixture here at City Hall for many years. He was in here in the morning, he was in here at noon, and he was in here in the afternoon. And so, congratulations.
Everything but a key.
Everybody wanted to see him before five. And so, the retirement plaque that we presented to you says, "Presented to Mike Burkhardt, awarded sewer distribution specialist, II, January 8th, 2001 to October 31st, 2018, with sincere appreciation and gratitude for 17 years of dedicated service to the citizens, elected officials, and staff of the City of Palaka, Florida. Presented this 8th day of November 2018, the Palaka City Commission and staff, and we'll have your plaque 40. Let's trigger it.
We'd like for all the veterans in the audience to stand so we can present you with a pin in honor of your service. Veterans?
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming forward, Mr. Back.
Thank you.
How are you?
Thank you for your service, sir.
Can you tell us your name and what branch?
My name's Byron Breckler, Fairver, Little Island, Rhode Island. I'm a big fan.
Colton Palmer, United States Marine Corps, six years.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service, and we definitely appreciate you guys coming forward with us today, and this is our love and appreciation from the City of Palaka. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to remind everyone to join your community on Monday, because Sunday is Labor Day, but they're gonna hold a parade on Monday, and so, I'm sorry, Veterans Day, I'm way behind. And so, 10 o'clock is when the parade starts. It starts on 11th Street. It'll go St. John's Avenue down to the Riverfront, and they'll have a veterans' recognition ceremony at 12 o'clock at Riverfront Park. Everyone's invited.
Again, thank you to our veterans. Next up, student of the month has been canceled for tonight, and will come back next week and try to reiterate the name. Too bad you're not a backdoor. Not a day I'm sweating. Student of the month, Commissioner McCaskill. It's our time. As Commissioner McCaskill comes forward, as we always do, we take this time out, first and foremost, to say thank you to our educators for the work that they do with our youth. All too many times, they only hear from us when they're complaining. We can all agree that they're not paid enough for what all they do for our young people in this community, and we just wanna say thank you. So all our educators are usually in the hallways and around on the side, but if they can just wave their hands or stand, we're gonna let you know that we really appreciate you. You guys can do better than that for these young people. I wanna make sure, I also take this time out to recognize Ms. Pam Brown, who's one of our graduation coordinators for the county. Graduation rates in the county have soared, so Ms. Brown, stand up for me. This country's graduation rate buzzed about three years ago.
Three years ago, when we started this journey, my graduation rate was 54.9%. After the first year, it went to 64%. The next year, it went to 72.2%, and next month, we're looking for it to be above 80%.
We're looking, we're looking for the Putnam County School District to become a D school district very soon, which is a great turnaround from being a D district, and so, we are, we are just grateful to have you educators in this room today who are so committed to our young people, and we just thank you for all your work. Also, our family, friends, neighbors who've come today to accompany our youth, will you please wave their hands or stand at this time? Because without you, there's nothing possible. We only got one family member today, because I didn't see anybody else wave their hands. And now, for the time that you're waiting for, it's our student of the month for November of 2018. Just so that you'll know, as we call the student's name, you come forward and receive your certificate, you'll be accompanied by a representative from your school. We will line up across the front of the room. Once we've called all the names out, and we'll go ahead and take a quick recess so that you can take pictures, you can take individual pictures of the student, you can memorialize, family pictures, whatever you wanna do, so that you can have this moment for you. And we wanna make sure that we give you every opportunity to commemorate this moment. And so, we're gonna start out with our first student, who has a great last name, from Browning Pierce Elementary School, Christopher Hill. From CLO, it's our sixth grade center, Javon Palmer. From Children's Reading Center Charter School, Le'Yon Mife. From E.H. Miller School, J.J. Boynton DeWitt. Is J.J. with us? Okay. And I am going to mess this name up. From Zaneley Low Elementary School, Shai Stillward. I usually butcher these two every month. From Jenkins Middle School, Anna Cordova. From Jenkins Middle School, Nicholas Stegwell, Steg, Stigl, Nicholas Stigl. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Tristan Behena. From Mellon Elementary, Justin Harn. From Mosley Elementary, Sharnell Q. From Penn Outbackness Academy, Abigail Collier. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Brayden Johns. From Putnam Mans High School, Thomas Wall. And from Palaka High School, Tabelle Adams. And so, again, let's give it up for our young people. And so, I leave you guys with something that I learned in the third grader, and we would say it every day in this Green's class, as an eight-year-old, 46-years-old, I still remember it to this day, and it says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." It sticks with you because you are somebody, you're somebody special, somebody destined for greatness, and the sky is the limit. And so, just remember that you can do anything but fail if you try. So you guys continue to do the great works that you have, we look forward to you leading our community and our country, and so, we just wanna say thank you for all your wonderful work. Let's give it another round of applause. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting back to order at this time. We will move on to item two of the agenda, which is our public comment. Anyone who's here that wishes to speak during public comment, we have yellow speaker's cards in the back of the room. Please fill that card out and bring it up to the front so that we can acknowledge you for your opportunity to speak. Public comments are limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. First up, Rob Ficker. Peaceful Minds for Medical Marijuana.
Hi, I'm Rob Ficker.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, everyone who will speak, so that we'll have it for our record?
2420 Carr Street. So, hi, I want to talk about, I've come in here and spoken about it before, it's called homehold cannabis ordinance. I was speaking with Betsy earlier today, she said I should come in and try to submit it for the agenda for next time. I'm the chairman of Peaceful Minds for Medical Marijuana. You know, we pass up marijuana here in Florida, but we can't, nobody can grow the plant, and it's very expensive, and there's no insurance, like insurance doesn't matter or anything. And like, if a person needs a car, they can get one, but nobody can grow the plant. It's extremely expensive, it prices a lot of people out of the market, but they can't grow the plant. And what this could do, it could be either designed for medical or, I'm not exactly sure of the lawyering of all of that, but it's, what it would do is, it would allow homegrow in Palaka City. And, you know, it's the most progressive thing you could really do in this town. Right here on the front page of the paper, Mayor Hill, you talk about how progressive our voters are in Florida, how Florida continues to lead this country. Well, if we did this, this would be the most progressive thing done on marijuana in Florida. Nobody's done homegrow legalization of any kind. It's a local issue. It would, it really calls a vote and just gets the people involved so that the people have their say rather than just, you know, laws that don't deserve people.
So definitely, thank you, Mr. Ficker. Do you have any questions, Mr. Ficker? If not, definitely thank you for coming forward today and bringing forth the issue, and we will definitely bring it under consideration if you come back for the agenda. Thank you very much. Next up is Lolita Thomas.
Hello, this is Lolita Thomas, 24th St. Lee Terrace, Palaka, Florida. Just wanted to come tonight on behalf of the Palaka Police Athletic League. I want to ask all of the mentoring group, ask all of our mentors to please stand that are here with us. All of our PAL mentors, all of our PAL mentors, if you would stand. Mentees, I'm sorry, excuse me, mentees, all of our mentees. To the mayor, to the commissioner, and to chief, we just wanted to come tonight to say thank you for all of your support of our programs that we're offering here in the City of Palaka, and we really appreciate all of the help that you all provide to us. And we just wanted to come and just represent and show you and tell you that we really, really appreciate you. Again, we wanna say thank you.
For those who are in TV land, can you let them know what programs you have available and how you can become involved?
Yes, I can. The Palaka Police Athletic League currently offers a mentoring program, we have a youth development program, basketball program, we also do bowling with the cops, we also offer track. If you would like to be a part of our program, you can go to and register for basketball, you can visit us at palaka-leagueapps.com, and we'll be more than willing to reach back out to you. So again, that well-addressed is palaka-league, as P-A-L, P-A-L, dot leagueapps, dot com. So I really appreciate you. If anyone wants and need any information about what we're doing, please feel free to contact me. You can leave a message at the Palaka Police Department. me, you can leave a message at the Palaka Police Department at three-two-nine-zero-one-one-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Shaw. Anyone interested in the Police Athletic League, three-eight-six-three-two-nine-zero-one-one-five, we'll get you all the information that you need, or you can go to the Police Athletic League's website as well, PALleagueapps.com. Next up, Heaven Williams. Give her a round of applause.
Good evening.
Give her your name.
Two-two-three Holly Lane. My name is Heaven Williams, a member of Delta Academy, Delta Gems Program of the Palm Coast Flagler County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, who provides community service to Putnam, Flagler, and St. John's County and beyond. We thank you for allowing us to attend and speak at the Putnam County Board of Commissioners meeting on today. Delta Academy is a mentoring program created out of the bold actions that is needed to save young females from academic failure, low self-esteem, and negative images in society. The goals of the program are to focus on the social, physical, and emotional development of young females in grades six through eight, and to prepare them to fulfill participation as leaders in the 21st century. Delta Gems, the acronym for Growing and Empowering Myself Successfully, was created to help African-American young females in grades nine through twelve realize their dreams. The Delta Gems framework is to form a roadmap for college and career planning. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority members provide us with structured learning activities that focus on topics such as self-esteem, empowerment, education, community public service, and leadership skills, healthy eating and exercise, and enhance our talents and interests. The goals are to instill the need to sharpen and enhance skills to achieve high levels of academic success, to assess and proper goal setting and planning for the future, and to create a compassionate, caring, and community-minded young females that actively involve us in learning and community service opportunities. We thank you for your support, and we promise you that we will continue to excel academically and provide community service in our communities.
Thank you.
Can I get on my Delta Gems and stand up? Let's recognize the Delta Gems that are in the audience at this time. Ladies, can you come forward? Our Delta Gems and the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
May I have a comment up, may I say, or say something?
Sure.
All right. Ladies, I want you all to know, I know you all watched TV and saw the election. Did you see how many women won? All right, set a goal, because you can, you can do this too.
Thank you.
Next up, Katie Long. Palaka Young Professionals.
Hi, I'm Katie Long. I'm one of the founding members of Palaka Young Professionals, six-twenty-eight Main Street, Palaka, Florida. If you see on one of the agenda, I just have a special event coming up, and it's our November event. Before I talk with you about our actual events, can you hear me okay?
Okay.
All right, before I get started on our events, I'd like to tell you a little about what Palaka Professionals is. Palaka Professionals consists of young professionals in our community up to the age of forty-five who have joined together to promote several different causes, all everybody lives in Palaka's downtown, and are recruitment, retention, development, and are committed to great efforts within our city. So, within recruits, we have a lot to do with our young professionals that are soon to be, and that's you, people who are currently in school right now, people who are about to graduate and are ready to enter the workforce. We have several opportunities available for you, we have mentorship programs, and we include you in a lot of our programming. Our November event that's coming up is called Life Tonight. We had a hundred and seventy students participating in creating luminaries for downtown. They're each allowed to do two, and there's a cash prize contest for them. In accordance with that, in keeping with the artistic spirit, which we've joined with the Greater Palaka Artists Council, we also have professional artists coming down to do three-D sidewalk chalk drawings. So, you can actually go down, and it looks like you're falling in a hole, or you're standing next to something, or there's, you know, something wrapping its arm around you, which should be really making fun. The PALS Trek will be there, we're very excited about that, to work with them. And we also have another event coming up in December. Our December event is a double feature movie evening, where we play two movies back-to-back, it's free, both of these are free, they're open in the community, we encourage you to come down, bring your family. These are family fun events, family-friendly and fun events, and come participate with us. We'll have several sponsors at our December event that should be doing fun things. And each one of our events, what I think makes them so unique is that they're experiential. And what I mean by that is that we want you to walk away with a moment and a memory that you had with a loved one, or a friend, or someone else in your community that might be a peer or a mentor. So, something from this you should walk away with is a unique experience within our organization's Questions?
No, I just, I just got one thing I want to say, though.
Okay, good.
Just excluding me and the mayor.
You were excluded about ten years ago.
Actually, I was telling you that our mayor was our first member to age out.
I turned, I turned forty-six in August.
We're going to pass an ordinance, though, to see when you get through.
Okay, we'll see on that, we'll come speak on that one. It's Palaka Young Professionals, excellent website, it's palakawyp.com. Yep, palakawyp.com. Our membership breaks down to about ten dollars a month for something fun to do, and that ten dollars gives us the opportunity to pay for the events and materials we need to continue to do things like this that are open to the public. So, we look forward to seeing you all down there. Our November event is this Friday, it's from four to seven on the Riverfront, we encourage you to come down. Our local businesses are going to have some unique ideas for gift-giving as well, and I hope to see you all there. Please bring your friends and your family, especially your little ones, I think this will be a unique event for them.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Moving the agenda to item number three, which is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we have items A through D. Are there any items outside of item C that you want pulled from the consent agenda?
You say outside of C?
Yes.
Are you pulling D?
No, I'm pulling C.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve items A, D, and D of the consent agenda.
This is a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item C, adopt resolution number twenty-eighteen R-one-one-four, authorize execution of an agreement with GP Corporation for Palaka Fire Department response to the Palaka plant. Chief, can you come up for me just for a second? As chief comes forward, the only reason I'm pulling this item is, it's a thirty-six-month contract, which has no riders for early term, and I know we've talked about this a bit, but I just want to make sure that we create a record for it. The, what a twenty-five-thousand-dollar annual fee does not have an increase on an annual basis, it's a, it's a flat fee. And the only question I have is, as it relates to additional cost or any additional cost in that fee, can you just tell us how those are worked, if there's a hazmat condition that exceeds, for our cost perspective, that twenty-five-thousand-dollar fee that's there?
Yeah, basically, the twenty-five-thousand-dollar fee were basically guaranteed as a response to the, to the facility. And what they do is, they also pay an hourly charge for every person we send, they pay an hourly charge for all of our equipment we send, just depending on how long we're there. We have contractual rates, we say we pay less in a non-contracted business, so, but the hourly rates cover our payroll plus, you know, the equipment usage. Did I answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Now, we checked, have we checked to see how our, our annual rate, our annual cost fee compares to other issues?
I actually called around underneath the direction of our former city manager to try to find out what other facilities of that nature actually do, and I was not able to find any other instance like that. I called around to a paper mill in Arkansas, one in Alabama, one in Georgia, and all of them had different things, because all of the facilities actually lie inside the municipal districts that they would respond to on a normal basis.
Right. Okay.
On the, on the three-year, twenty-five-thousand-dollar contract, or just the basic amount, that is only for the salaries, right, for the?
That's, that's basic, what it does is, is actually, GP comes to us, I think it's four times a year, and we do a daily training with them.
Hazmat training.
And includes that, maybe some of it's hazmat, maybe urban search and rescue, or some type of rescue training for the day. So, our teams are able to interact with one another, they actually pay for our instructors to be there with that contract as well. So, that is part of it, but the, the balance of it is just saying that we will come to their facility if something was to happen.
Mostly a retainer.
It's mostly a retainer-type fee, of just, of just making sure that we will send crews there, just a guaranteed fire response to their, to their facility.
Like, like the last fire they had?
Correct. I mean, just to give you a rough idea, I think the last fire we went out there to was an additional fifteen thousand dollars, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything from council?
Nope. We've dealt, we've gone back and forth with this a little bit, and there were some clauses in it that we felt were, were probably geared more towards other types of vendors, not towards a fire service vendor, more towards their normal contractor that might come in to do work that we felt were not applicable, that had to do with liability assumptions and things. They were, they ultimately were cooperative in striking all of those clauses, and, you know, with regard to the numbers, the amount, I left that to the chief, and this does represent an increase over what they were doing before.
That is correct.
Seventy-five-hundred more.
Yeah, and it also is, that's an additional fifteen over what they were paying three or four years ago.
So, no, I have no further, I have nothing else to add to that.
Yeah, but I, I just, one reason I asked the question, so that you guys would actually understand the historic perspective of where we, where we've been with this contract, and it's been, what, over six months that we've been going back and forth, it's probably a year, at least a year.
Yeah, we've just taken some time between the, the legal council to get everything just, where, it was obtainable for us to do, because I mean, some of that stuff that was in there was just unattainable for us.
And this goes, this is retroactive to February first of 2018.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we're already in the, in the years.
So, now you want the motion to accept?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to accept.
This is motion to approve on the floor. There's a second by Commissioner Borum, is there any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thanks, chief. Moving on to item four of the agenda, request for nominal lease, the city-owned building at five-twenty-one Kurrell Avenue, the northern half of Cooper Building for drop-in center, Stewart Marchman Act of Putnam County.
I'll go ahead, and I've given you all some background on this. One year ago today is when Mr., or yesterday is when Mr. Alex Sharp and Mr. Zenny Best, who had been coming to the commission for maybe two years, making his request for a mental health clubhouse, they stood in front of the commission and asked for an opportunity to negotiate on a lease for this building that is in question tonight. They wanted to operate, Mr. Sharp was already operating this type of a thing out of his office, but it had outgrown his space. So, we were actually working with them on coordinating the lease and getting into the building when Mr. Sharp unexpectedly passed away, which left Mr. Best without an anchor for his clubhouse, because this was all going to take place under the auspices of Mr. Sharp and his, his five-one-C-three. So, we went to the Putnam County Safety Coordinating Council, Mayor Hill and I and Mr. Best, to ask them to take this on as a project or with some guidance, because we really believed in the project and that it was something that was very necessary for Putnam County, and the commission directed us to do so. So, we worked with them, and I'll kind of let you take it from there.
LSF, which is Lutheran Services of Florida.
And just go ahead and say your name.
Nancy Russo, I'm the vice president of Putnam SMA Services. And during one of our safety commission meetings, they approached us, and LSF, which is Lutheran Services of Florida, which is the managing entity for the funds, was present at the meeting and took an interest in the project, and then approached our CEO about providing funding for a drop-in center. Now, he, Mr. Best had wanted a clubhouse model, which is a little more intensive in its planning and developing, which wouldn't have been able to get off the ground as quickly as starting out with a drop-in center. So, if we can utilize the funds for a drop-in center, probably within the next three to five years, we could move it into a clubhouse or a psychosocial type model.
Can you just kind of give them, just to kind of give a, a brief synopsis of what the drop-in center does?
It is a place for people who are being treated for mental health problems can come and socialize and get services. We do groups, we can, we do arts and crafts, they have music, they have social skills, they have all of the things that they would need to develop those skills that would help them be better and more productive in the community. We would also be providing training for employability skills through Career Source. We have, our case managers from another program are SOAR certified, which allows them to assist a client with applying for disability. And when you're SOAR certified and you assist with those applications, they kind of get seen with a little more weight, and they usually get put through without having to go the legal route of getting legal representation to build the case. So, they would get those benefits quicker, we'd be working with the housing authority and the homeless coalition to get rapid rehousing for some of them, and just be able to give them a place to come to get all of these services.
So, the, the existing location in itself would create a perfect drop-in spot for people who have been served by other, by other organizations currently within the building, and also, it creates an opportunity for us to have services in the central portions of the city.
We took field trips, we went to the Opportunity Center in Gainesville, and we also went to the St. Augustine Drop-In Center, and Mr. Griffith's schooling of a PowerPoint presentation on the proposal, and they were fantastic centers. They, I can't even, you would need to go and visit them to see what they do for the members, they're not clients, they're members, and our building house in Gainesville, which is a truly clubhouse international model, is one-hundred percent pure driven. They have so many services that they, that they provide, and there's a story in your package, it was picked up by First Coast News on the St. Augustine Drop-In Center, which is a great place, and it talked about a woman who was from Palaka, who every morning, she left her house four-thirty in the morning to catch a cab to East Palaka to take the Sunshine Bus to St. Augustine, and then she made two more transfers in order to be at the drop-in center when it opened up at eight o'clock AM, she was back committed to the program. But she had to do that in order to get those services, you know, which helped her, and it helps them all. What really strikes me about the programs is how self-aware everyone who is involved is with their struggles, their diagnoses, what it is that they need to do to overcome them. Here is some other information that I can pass along. There is a ton of support in the community, I've got a letter here that I was going to pass out to you. This was generated today by the, well, it comes, Public Safety Coordinating Council, which meets at the Board of County Commissioners Office. This is a conglomeration of everyone who has any interest at all in safety and coordinating, especially mental illness. Dr. Russo's report pretty much drives the meeting, where they talk about the number of Baker Acts that they've had, the client services that they provided, and this is where all this is discussed. Do you want to take control of this?
And they're all, are also job opportunities that are.
Yes, this creates four jobs, and Mr. Best has, they've been talking to him about one of the peer support specialist positions, if he believes that he can do it, but if not, he'll certainly have a role.
Yeah, the opportunity to volunteer and mentor, yes, as a woman.
Yes, and this is, if he was here tonight, which he couldn't be, because he's in New York moving his daughter to Putnam County, if he was here tonight, he would be beside himself with joy. Yeah, just. Yeah, just unable to contain. So this is the presentation.
Yeah, so this is the front of the building in St. John's County. There we go. They had a grand opening on June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen, had a ribbon-cutting ceremony with the city officials there. And it was also reported by the newspaper. This is the front ramp, they made it handicapped accessible, and they have the garage that they've turned into a game room that has a ping-pong table and other areas for them to play different games in. And then when you go inside, it's a very warm and inviting atmosphere in this little gathering room, and has very comfortable furniture, it has a flat-screen TV above the fireplace, so then you can go in there and hang out and just socialize with people. And then they have, the room on the left is the multipurpose room, they use it to provide craft activities, music classes, and they also do their group therapy. And then they have their tray kitchen, where they cook their meals, the clients themselves cook the meals for the group.
The artwork on the walls is all done by members.
Yes. And these are at the St. John's Center, they promote socialization, you meet people dealing with the same struggles, safe from harassment, a warm, home-like atmosphere, they have a fully-equipped kitchen stocked with donated food, they have a laundry facility that they operate on a first-come, first-served basis. They have groups every day with different subjects, women's peer support, dual diagnosis, art, nutrition, cooking, chess, piano, life skills, book club, and then the leisure activities of games and books and movies. We offer free Wi-Fi for them to have computer access, they have a lending closet for clothing, and they do bus tokens and collecting cards. Those are the hour, they have groups, different groups each day.
Oh, yeah, no doubt. No doubt.
And so far, they, in twenty-two months since they've been open, they have admitted a hundred and eighty employees. They've provided three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four units of service, and a unit is fifteen minutes, and one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five units of group therapy. And then these are all of the funding sources and community partners for the St. John's Center. So we want to model exactly what they're doing because of their success. So for us, we would do the same thing, we'll be open Monday through Friday, eight to five. And the benefits it'll provide to the community, it has, it's a safe, supportive environment for those individuals with mental health needs, it increases the mental health services to the target population, it'll assist in applying for benefits that will allow the individuals the ability to pay for housing, food, medical care, and their basic needs, and assisting in the employability skills to become more productive community members. So the site improvements, we estimate that it's going to take approximately forty thousand dollars to bring the building and the property up to the appropriate standards for client service areas. We'll be soliciting donations and financial support from various aspects of the community to meet these needs. We've already begun the grant application with Clay Electric to help with some of that. Our funding from LSF only applies for the direct provision of services, but we'll make the following, in the next few slides, the following improvements as the financial support comes in. So currently, this is what the outside of the building looks like. And our plans for the outside is to pressure wash at the exterior of the entire building. So we're not just going to do the improvements on the section that we would have, we're going to do it to the entire building. So that would be the food pantry as well. Replace the windows, paint the entire exterior of the building, add landscaping around the entire building, and we're looking to add a greenhouse and a garden shed, so we can teach them how to grow their own spices and vegetables and things like that. I say it needs to be hidden from the deers and the rabbits, which is why we're going to put it in a greenhouse. And then the interior space, there's four pictures here from all different angles. It's a wide, open space, we measured it, it's about twenty-three hundred square feet So if it's a problem, we want to paint the interior walls and the doors, clean or replace the carpet, add cabinets, countertops for the kitchen area. There is currently no plumbing for hot water in the building, so that would all have to be done. So we would be able to install the shower and the laundry, stackable washer and dryer, and add a secure office for the program coordinator, which will also be where our IT equipment and files will be. And then just overall furnishing, a creative, warm and inviting atmosphere, get the bars off the windows and maybe put in a security system outside instead, make it more home-like. And there's also, the windows are boarded up, so we would take those down so we can add, you know, natural light in the building. And then our plans for services would be pretty much the same, drop-ins, the food, laundry, daily groups. I'd add guest speakers. There's a lot of support from the community to come and help with this. So the career sources would come in and teach on employability schools, skills, resume writing. We could have the police department or the sheriff's department come in and do safety skills with them. We, there are some other ideas, housing, and then.
Roommate hygiene.
Hy- yes. And then the leisure activities and the life skills would be the same. And then, we've talked, we've made a couple of pleas for a van to be able to do the shuttle service like they're doing in St. John's. And I know the sheriff's department is looking at the possibility of getting us a van. And one of our peer support specialists went to the homeless coalition meeting, and there was someone there from the United Way that said that they could also help with that if the sheriff's department couldn't, couldn't do it.
You can also talk to Ride Solutions about trying to create an additional stop.
Yeah, okay.
Through a transportation disadvantage.
And they do go right by the building, it's just how far out the clients may come from, I don't know if they'll be able to get to their stops.
They work the, they'll work the entire county.
And then for our community involvement, attendance to the open house, participate in that, press release and media coverage, donations from area businesses, expert guest speakers, and volunteers and interns for site improvements and to assist with clients and activities. So if somebody likes to paint, or somebody likes to play guitar, and can come and teach an hour a week and do those kind of things, we'll take, you know, whatever assistance we can get for that, for those services.
Got the lights, please.
And I, we have got a ton of community support just from the meeting that we attended today. We've got two Rotary Clubs that have all but committed to coming and doing much of the work. We've already got a washer and dryer.
Wow.
Yeah, and a source for paint, we've got a source for a, I was told to contact Palaca Gas, I said, well, I know those folks. And get, get the hot water heater, plumbing, we even spoke with the county building official who says that he looked over your list and said, this is not a problem, they're going to approach it as a type-two remodel, Mr. Lochnick. So you're, you're, you know, kind of familiar with that. And so they have fully committed to cooperating any way that they can.
Can you let us vote on it first? Let us vote on it right quick. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. And so again, congratulations, and thank you guys for your commitment.
Just to add the grant, the grant that you all applied for, it's probably a.
It'll be up to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that you, that we recognize the fact that the CEO is here, and just how important this is for this community and also for Stuart Marchman. And so again, we thank you guys for your commitment to the community.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, you can say whatever.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say, if you get a chance to check out the St. Augustine Drop-In Center, you'll get an idea of what it is that you got to experience there. It's, it's an amazing thing. The other thing is that, you know, as a nonprofit, we are always begging for money, and usually the money that we get is time-limited, it's one year, it's two years, or it's three years, and then it's done. This is recurring funding, so we expect this to be in the community for a very long time, and that's what we're really, really excited about. So thank you for the opportunity, and thanks for your support.
I just want to say, if there's any opportunity, with some of the stuff that you said, that our youth could possibly get involved to help around, definitely let me know, and I can probably have a team, especially our pal, I sit on the board, and our mentor group, they're used to doing things like that. So if there's any kind of partnership we can make there, let's make that happen.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Youth of mental health is, a training is, would be phenomenal, to teach our youth about those who struggle with mental health and just to eliminate that stigma. So, but thank you guys again.
And we have a commitment from the Department of Corrections to supply us people to paint, people to plumb, and people to paint. They're very excited about it.
So this is a, I think this is a great step towards providing needed services in this community, where we've got instant access. And, and, and just, it's a better, it's a higher and better use of the building than what we've had before. And we, again, we thank you guys for coming on board and partnering to make this a reality. And we thank Zinni Best for his relentless effort as well. And so let's give him a round of applause.
Huge success with Syria Palaca in Putnam County, we certainly needed that service.
Yes.
Moving on.
And there's one more aspect to this, if I may say, is that we're going to need, we have, I have told the Palaca Duplicate Bridge Club that we would help them find a home.
You're on it, it's your assignment.
We're already on it, and so.
So moving to agenda, item five.
We would like for the community to help us come up with a place for the Palaca Bridge Club, play bridge once a week.
Moving to agenda, item five, public hearing, resolution, authorizing acceptance of Veterans Village subdivision plot, five lots and fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred blocks of westover drive habitat for humanity applicant. I'm going to read the resolution. Caption, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing acceptance of the final plot of Veterans Village, a habitat for humanity development, and authorizing all required signatures on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Florida.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? A closed public hearing, Mr. Lochnick. If you can come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, we have received the plot and been reviewed by Earl Wallace for consistency with the plot requirements, and it is good to go. With your vote, we can get the copy signed off, and we'll get that to you in the next probably a few days.
Any other questions from the commission?
Questions.
Questions called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Lochnick.
We've been along back and forth on this.
Moving on to item number six of the agenda, public hearing, planning board recommendation to Annex thirty-three oh one, Krill Avenue, amend future land use map from Putnam County U.S. Urban Services to City COM Commercial and rezoned for Putnam County C-two commercial R-one-A residential to City C-two intensive commercial, Lanell Wall, Animal Medical Clinic, applicant, item A, annexation ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as three-three-zero-one Krill Avenue, located in section eleven, township ten south, range twenty-six east, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, and providing an effective date.
So, there's a motion by Commissioner Campbell, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Item B, future land use amendment ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from Putnam County U.S. Urban Services to COM Commercial for three-three-zero-one Krill Avenue, property located in section thirteen, township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Second. Is there a motion on the floor in a second? Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, I'm sorry. I've got one person for public hearing. It's the Legra kitchens.
Sorry, Mayor, but when it was read this time, I think you said, for the part B, it says section thirteen or ten twenty-six, and previously it said section eleven, and Dr. Wallace claimed it's actually section eleven.
She is correct. She usually is when it comes to legal script. What took you so long? Duly noted. Any, anyone else here for public hearing? Seeing no one, this kitchen's going to fill out a speaker's card for us later.
You don't know it by now, you never will.
We won't, no, I got you, we're good. So, no sticker this time. So, no, nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. And just for the record, the motion included the amendment to the correction. Moving on to item C, rezoning ordinance, second reading for adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C-dash-two commercial and R-dash-one A residential single-family, the City C-dash-two intensive commercial for the following property, three-three-zero-one Krill Avenue, section eleven, township ten south, range twenty-six east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second, my Commissioner Williams. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven of the agenda, ordinance amending zoning code, chapter ninety-four, to allow restaurants to allow patrons' dogs within the outdoor portions of the restaurant. First reading, Mr. Lochnick.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, amending the zoning code, chapter ninety-four of the municipal code, to allow patrons' dogs within outdoor portions of restaurants, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Mr. Lochnick.
Mr. Mayor, the citizen approached us recently, has a restaurant facility, and they would like to be able to accommodate dogs, patrons that had their dogs in their outdoor areas of the restaurant. In two thousand and six, state adopted legislation which allowed for this exemption to otherwise requirements of the Health Department. There are very specific rules in that legislation that were adopted. The ordinance that you have before you pretty much paraphrases the rules almost verbatim from the statute. The process would be optional, it would be a permit process, person by person with a restaurant with an outdoor seating area, would make the request to the city, they would have to abide by the regulations within the ordinance, and we would issue a permit to them to allow them the option of having patrons with their dogs accompany them in the restaurant.
To the outer portions of the restaurants.
The portions designated for the animals in the outer portion of the restaurant.
So it's going to be a certain area that.
Yes.
You have designated areas.
It's, they're not allowed to go within the proper building with the animals. The animals also cannot obstruct access to the restaurant by patrons without animals. There's several regulations, there's several rules, like I say, it's pretty well spelled out by statute, which is provided in the ordinance that we have locally. The permit application would be fairly straightforward, we could probably restate the same regulations right on the application, and the app would provide a sketch showing a diagram of how they would lay out the area where the dog could be allowed, and they would be required to put up some sign. And they would require to put up some signs that advise patrons as to the regulations about the dogs.
And so what, and the other part is, I think the commission has the ability to, if there's anything else that you want to add to it, for whatever purposes, the commission can do that as well within the ordinance. Because the ordinance is an exemption to the current state, to the state statute.
But I don't think you can restrict, even on the outside, you can't restrict them to a certain area, I think.
You can, based on the statute.
You just need to have, the, the main thing, I think, the statute, it says, is having entrance that allows people to walk by without having to walk through the dogs.
So, so...
It's, it's very minimal.
So that, so that you're clear, the, the statute forbids animals in restaurants. It gives an exemption that municipalities can adopt. And you can place, you can, it's what we call in illegal terms, time place manner. You can restrict the areas in which they are because you're giving an exemption to the state statute. And this is one place that the law allows the municipality to add, to take away from what the statute itself says and give it, and give a special exemption to restaurants for the outdoor portions only. And so the statute is clear on how it happens.
So just to be clear, we can be outside and there's a certain area, almost like a designated smoking area where the dogs would be...
Yeah, so when you, so when you go to, when you go to places, for example, if you go to places like Mount Dora or some of the other places, they have outdoor areas, like where people who are traveling with their pets can actually go to restaurants and they can actually have their pets with them if they're outside.
I've been to one garden, I'm, they have a nice, like, upscale, um, breakfast, um, location down in one garden. And they do have where pets are allowed. I'm not a big fan of pets, or whatever, with all the things, but...
Well, it's, it's an option of the owner. If the owner perceives that their clientele is not comfortable with the pets, well then, they would be the ones who would be able to say no. They, they don't have, it's not a requirement.
It's okay.
It's their option, they have to apply for it.
I just don't want to impose something.
And have every, and have every right to say, no more pets, and just take the signs down and say, you know, our clients don't like it and we're changing our features.
I mean, and I, I'll tell you, it's, you see it everywhere now. I mean, and, and it's just one less thing that creates another opportunity not to be restricted by people in their designated area. So they're not inside the restaurant. You're seeing service dogs inside a restaurant. But you're, but they're the only, that's the only exception for in, in, in the interior of the restaurants. General pets are only allowed in exteriors of certain places, and that's based upon municipality's preference. So, that's what we have in place at this time. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Commissioner Campbell. We'll now open the floor for, open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye. If, if the restaurant...
So, this is, so again, so, so again, this is first reading? If you have any, if you still have another reading, you still have another reading to do, to do some research. So, so all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on.
Ma'am, can I tell you something? If y'all ever go to Kiwi, some people have snakes and dogs and monkeys and parrots.
It's only for dogs. This is only for dogs.
It's the first reading, Commissioner.
One restaurant?
No, this is for the city. This is for, this is for any restaurant that had, that can...
It's the option of the owner, and the market'll, I mean, if it's not a thing, if nobody, if nobody wants to go there where they allow dogs, then it probably won't last real long. It'll probably eliminate that option.
Certain places with certain type of clientele would probably like to have this accommodation. Most places or a lot of places might not. It's just, it's up to the option of the owner.
That's like hotels, too. There are some places that take animal, take dogs, and then they're hotels.
And many places don't have outdoor seating or outdoor eating areas, so they're, they're already disqualified.
Now, if you add snakes to it.
And so again, we're on first reading. Again, Palaca is becoming progressive. We are moving forward. And just so that you know, we brought this forward after having a conversation with one of the local business owners. And, and I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea because it, it allows that business owner to make that determination.
It allows variety. If that one business wants to do it and nobody else does, so be it.
And then when they have, uh, when we have all those festivals and stuff, people have their animals, their animals with them, they walk them.
You'll be interested. I saw a guy that, that actually goes out that talks about pet-friendly in communities. And people can bring their, their pets to different places that have dog parks, that have opportunities for them, that's pet-friendly. So, it's different. And so, uh, moving forward. It actually wasn't. City manager and administrative reports. I will, I guess we'll start out with item A. Preliminary twenty-eighteen general election results. Mayor, Commissioner, and Commissioner Group Two, Commissioner Group Four, he didn't have to work. Re-elected unopposed, city clerk.
I worked, I worked.
These, this is for the record. We have a prelim, a two thousand and eighteen general election was held on Tuesday, the sixth. And in that election, if you'll turn to page two, you see the preliminary results there. Palaca City Commissioner, or Palaca City Mayor, times cast means how many ballots were cast. Fifty-five point forty-five percent total turnout, which was really impressive. Mayor Terrell L. Hill will remain the mayor with one thousand nine hundred and forty-four votes. And those were the preliminary votes. They still have to, they had not counted the provisional ballots yet. And they also are waiting for the overseas ballots to come in. If they were postmarked on the day of the election or prior, they, they will count them. So usually about ten days before the canvassing board actually certifies the election. The next race that was on the ballot was Palaca City Commissioner Group Two. So Commissioner Campbell was elected on two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight votes, very impressive. And out of a total of three thousand forty-four votes, so we had a very high voter turnout. Highest, I, I think it's the highest I've ever seen in any of the city elections. Commissioner Group Four, Commissioner Borum ran unopposed in the primary, and so he was technically re-elected back in office. So these are the preliminary results. When I receive the final results, we'll have to enter them into the record in December. Congratulations.
Thank you. Let's get up for Commissioner Campbell.
Look up for the mayor.
And so, um, moving on, we've got administrative reports, and no one's here but the chiefs and Mr. Lochnick.
Now, we got Mr. Devera on.
All right.
We can give it up for Commissioner Barr.
Oh, I'm sorry. Congratulations to Commissioner Borum again. I only thought about the people who actually worked on their campaigns.
Sweat, bloody, tears.
He's the, he's the most popular of two thousand and eighteen. Hey, glad you're here, Mr. Yule. You're up first. You got anything for us? That's okay, we're fine. Great. You're not compelled to come for it.
No problems, no problems at all. We're starting for the fly-in, and the fence project is, is done. We inspected it today. You know I was cleaning up, but the fence project's done, and, uh, good week.
How far, where are we on the RFP? For, the new RFP for services, are we getting together with the gas authority? I met with the airport authority.
I spoke with Judd Newfeld yesterday and told him we would have something by tomorrow. So, I will have it reviewed by tomorrow. Mr. Newfeld and I spoke yesterday, maybe it was the day before. But anyway, we spoke in this week, and I told him we'd have it this week.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Griffin? Really? Ms. Tucker? You want to report about that grant we just received? I'll do it for you if you don't want to. Now go ahead. One point, we have a one point eight million dollar grant for the Fourteenth Street Flood Drainage Project that came from a CDBG Disaster Relief Grant. And so, that's coupled with a three point five million dollar grant that the county received under the same grant process to, to move our infrastructure on St. John's Avenue for a resurfacing project as well. And so there, that will include the expansion...
And stormwater.
And, expansion, stormwater, and resurfacing of St. John's Avenue. Again, it's a total ten million dollar project. We're looking at over long-term, but it allows us to be able to start the work on St. John's Avenue as well. Let's deal with our flooding aspects on Fourteenth Street. So, did I cover it? I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So again, let's give it up. That's a great grant for us. Ms. Robinson?
We don't have any job openings?
No, sir, we don't.
That's good news.
Chief Shaw. Chief Grimes? Mr. Lochnick? Mr. Holmes?
No, sir.
Ms. Driggers?
Well, these are coming up. We're gonna be closed on Monday for Veterans Day. Everyone come out to the parade if you can, support our veterans. This year, last year for Christmas, we adopted families from Lee Conley House and provided their Christmas for them, for the parent and the children in the house. And so, that was such a huge success. We're gonna do it again this year. Employees are adopting three families from Lee Conley House. And so I'll be getting, in fact, Ms. Robinson is going to head that up. She'll be getting all the information out. We'll be collecting donations for items, donations for, if we just go out and purchase things. Some of these, some of them want clothes, some of them want toys. So, um, we'll be getting that information out, and we hope that we get as much support this year as we did last year for that.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Borum?
Yeah, so, um, again, I, I did, um, got re, I got re-elected unopposed, but again, I'm, I, I worked hard all my four years.
That is so September. Like so June, though.
I don't stop, I don't quit, and people recognize and understand that. But long story short, I continue to look forward to working with everybody, the staff and the community, my platform, the fiscal accountability, helping to reduce crime as well as economic development. And again, I'm still plugged in with all the youth with various...
You won already. You won.
I know, but I just, and I, I, that's my...
He's running next time.
With the youth and various organizations, uh, and it relates to that. And continuing to work with our, our current commission here, we're still intact and will continue to move this city forward.
Commissioner McCaskill?
That's where I am now. Nothing much, just congratulate, Commissioner Williams. I feel like I'm on the radio. Anyway, I'm sorry. Just wanted to congratulate you guys on the hard work and looking forward to, um, great things, the great things that we have planned for this commission. Enjoyed our truck or treat at the Palaca Mall.
What was the number, chief? What was the number about the, around about?
Roundabout is three thousand. We're still waiting to get the final count.
All right, okay. The overseas ballots coming in?
It was great to see lots of families outside of the county. I mean, I couldn't, I was just elated to see all the students and families that came from out of New York and, you know, that attend our school, so that, it's growing, and that was exciting.
Thirty-five seventeen was the unofficial.
Wow.
That's a great job. Ms. Brown, Vice Mayor?
Well, I want to say I'm very happy to see you guys back for another four years. And it means that people feel like you've done something while you're here. We don't always get told thanks for stuff. I'm walking a little bit faster now, and I hope by the first of the year to be better. I got my tennis shoes on. All right, so we ready to hit the ground running. I'd like to see us step on our priorities again. We had, what, four or five of them out there? And push, we did the, the first two, to kind of work on the others and look at other priorities we need to get so that we'll make the next two years for me and the four years for you all the best that it can be for this town. And thanks to you all for all the good work you do. You're one of the better commission, commissions that I served on.
We're striving to be the best.
I'll let you know. If I give you that A night, then you might slow down, so I got to, I got to give you that B or that C, so make sure you get there.
And we're working. Commissioner Campbell?
Um, I echo what Ms. Vice Mayor Brown stated about making sure that our priorities are upfront, so the citizens of the city know what we're working on. And to the over two thousand, um, citizens...
Why you looking at me?
Of this great city, um, as a result of the support from them, I'm able to, um, remain involved in the progression of Palaca. And I'm inspired to create solutions that will confront the issues that we are faced with and challenging. And I want to make sure that every citizen is just as invested as I am. Many of you know that I ran on involved, inspired, and invested. And I just want to make sure that, again, um, our citizens are just, have the opportunity to be just invested as in this city as I am. So, again, thank you to the citizens of this great city. I look forward to serving you through my before.
You know, we know that with all his relatives.
Just for the record, a hundred and one more people voted in the mayor's race.
Then with your relatives, too.
More people that didn't vote for me. But again, uh, thank you to everybody for, you know, for another four, an opportunity for another four years. But I think most importantly, it's an opportunity for us to get away from campaigning. And the interesting part is, you don't have to campaign if you run on issues and if you continue to work. And I think that's, that was a good part about this election. We work, and our work speaks for itself. And I think the people have spoken and shown that to be the case. But, we want to continue to work. Uh, we've gone a few months now without a city manager. I want us to get back to business and continue the stuff that we've been doing without a permanent city manager. Betsy's done a great job. Ms. Driggers has done an excellent job in the interim. And so, yeah, let me finish my sentences before. And so, she's done a great job in the interim. But I'm ready for us to move forward with where we are and to, to look at, um, putting the city manager search back out there to see where it is. I'm sure Ms. Driggers is gonna apply for that position. So, um, I'm gonna suggest that our, that HR be in charge of that search as we move forward with Ms. Robinson. And, um, we've, we've had a lot of things that have been accomplished. We had a dead time for the first part of this year, and I think that, you know, the city's been moving progressively forward. And I want us to continually move forward. We've got four years in place, and I want Palaca, we're not gonna make Palaca great again. We're gonna keep Palaca great, because Palaca's already great. And, um, we're gonna move this community forward. I want us to look at those positions. I want us to look at permanency as it relates to where we are in several different places. Uh, the energy's here. We've got to fill our recreation director position. We've got to fill the permanency of the planning director position. Mr. Lochnick came in here temporarily, and I think we've locked him in to permanency. And so, um, so I want us to look at filling positions and moving this community forward as we move forward. I, I think we've done a great job thus far in adjusting. We have become the community that adjusts to whatever circumstances are put before us, and we've done a great job doing that. I want us to continually move forward. And we've got four years to do it. We've got the nucleus of a, we've got a great team that's our nucleus. And as long as we have our nucleus, there's nothing that we can't accomplish. And that's where we are. I want to give kudos to Betsy Driggers for the work that she's done, uh, because she's done a great job. And, um, I want, you know, our whole team has been working hard. And we just wanna, we, we want to go ahead and take interim titles and all that other stuff. And we want to move forward and make sure that we have all key components to this puzzle in place so that we can move forward, so that we can bring forward the vision. There's energy, there's property moving, there are people building. And it's time for us to just continue the wave. Let's not become stagnant. Let's make sure, um, that we've got stuff in place for us to move this community forward. That's my comments. Are there any comments or any additional comments based upon what I've said thus far? Together we are better, and together we're gonna be here being better for many more years. Thank you.